We can go to referendum in September of 2019 and hopefully sell Island Avenue in December of 2019. The sales price that we assumed was based on 2016 appraisal of $3 million. We then assumed a mill rate increase of today, of 2.71% of today's mill rate, based on the last four or five years average. That's what the mill rate's been going up. Not saying the mill rate's gonna be going up by that, but that's what we use. And we use an assessed value based of Muse, and we increased that a little bit just because of the location of Island Avenue by 20%. We also estimated that there could be 20 condo units built where the school is. And what else? And during, in these calculations, we used an interest rate assumption of 1.5%, which we have just received recently from our banking RFP that we went out. So then what I did is, we went through 19 fiscal year, 2020, '21, '22, and '23, and came up to what the lost revenue would be if we did decide to do a lease. So we said if we did sell based on those assumptions, we would sell in December of 2019, which we would have proceeds of $3 million in fiscal year 1920. Half a year of interest, half a year of tax revenue based on the building's value at the $3 million. Then we also, we, out of that number, we took out all the operating expenditures for half a year, utilities, insurance, maintenance, and we came up with revenue in 1920 of a little over $3 million. Then we went into the following year and said, if we still, if we sold the property in fiscal year 2021, we would have interest of $45,000, tax revenue of $337,000. And that is based on an increased mill rate of 2.71% off of today, as well as 20 condo units being construction, constructed and sold by that fiscal year. So again, it's a little aggressive, but these were assumptions that we're working with at the time. With that, we also added an insurance since we would still own the building, and if we did lease, we would have to add to that amount for the busing and the nurses, which that's how we came to the $535,000. Any questions? It's hard if you're not looking at it. And then all I did was project that out for the next couple of years.
So what did we estimate those condos would sell for?
We did-
In order to come up with that tax revenue?
Well, we did an assessed value of $475,000. So that's 70%, what is that?
Seven?
750 maybe? I don't know.
Are they the same size as the Muse?
We, we made an assumption, we had-
678.
678? Okay. I'm sorry, I don't have the gross amount. So we made an assumption, and we took the average price at the Muse. We didn't take the highest, we didn't take the lowest, and we just made an assumption because of the location that the value would be a little bit more than Muse.
Do you think it would be?
Question I have, you talked in sales price of roughly $3 million. At November 16, 2016, we had, on this, the town list here, we had land value of $811,000, correction, one man, $159,000, approximate value building, 3.7 for a total of $5,700,000. And trying to sell it at $3 million is quite a bargain for them.
So we're not proposing that we're gonna sell it for $3 million. We needed to estimate a market price?
I understand that.
And that, my personal two cents is that the property goes for much more than that, but-
I agree.
But we had, we had to use a number in our model.
All right. I understand that. And the position that I'm taking on this whole thing is, Tom, you said that a while back, few months ago, that Madison is not in the business to renting property.
Right.
And now we're doing just the opposite with that thing. And I have to really take exception to this thing where people are gonna come in and they wanna buy.
There's gonna be time for public comment, but this is not it, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, but we have to run our meeting, you know, according to rules. I did, yeah. Somebody's suggesting to me that you guys wanna come up and talk about your numbers? Explain them?
I wanted to give a little, I mean, a little background.
Yeah, just come on up. Come on up. Excellent.
And Tim Seren, Glad, who's CFO, thinking of the numbers. So Tom gave you a little bit of the history.
You can use the mic.
So Tom gave a little bit of the history. So I'll get a little bit more in essence of time. I know everybody's been here a while. I'll be brief. So basically, at the end of January, the families of OLM got an email saying they're closing our school. So a number of families banded together, and we started to, we had a public meeting. Actually, Tom and Matt, Joey from Gilford were there to support us. And we wanted to keep our school. Here in Madison, we wanted to save it. So we put together a group, we formed a foundation, we formed a few nonprofits, and we started to raise money. We raised a little over $1,303,000. And we had to say a little over $1,303,000, because we actually bought a building on Toll Road in Madison. So there will be busing and nursing this year in Madison for OLM. And from that, we started to do the rest of the process. And we met here, I believe, at sometime in, we met in April in two public meetings, I believe, and discussed the possibility of a lease, and then the vote was taken, and then we started negotiations, which were felt confidential. So it was all meant, we wanted to do it open, but they're confidential numbers. So from that April meeting, we started, we hired a principal, Ann Olson's here in the back room. We've hired over, you know, there's a lot of other benefits to having a school, right? We've hired over 15 people, teachers and a few employees, some of which live in Madison. And we really started to work together. And so we do have a building here for 2019, 18, and we're looking for something in 2019. So during that process, we came back and negotiated from, I don't know, I know I went away for a little bit in May, and I was hoping we'd be done, and we weren't done. And then we came with a figure, we can call it maybe a little aggressive, or maybe not a little aggressive, but something we feel that benefits the town and also benefits OLM, because we have a home. For a three-year lease, the two, almost 1.6 million for those three years. And from there, we talked about the jobs it creates and the people that we were here with, and the families that impacts, and the families that won't be in Madison school system, but because we'll be in OLM Prep. And we're trying to save this school. And, you know, and I get a couple little lies on social media, which I try to stay away of, away from also. But, you know, certain things were mentioned. So, you know, just my opinion about Academy, I wish everybody was still here, you know, politics isn't about tearing people down, it's about bringing people together. So the people from the town have been very supportive, and the Board of Ed, which at one point wasn't, they were making a motion to close the school, now voted to close the school and vacated in August. I don't mean the motion to close it, to vacate. And the people from Academy, the people from Island School, and people from OLM, working together. You know, my opinion about Academy, and Tom, you've mentioned this in a different set, is one of the options should be biotech startup companies on that footprint. There is so much federal money out there, there is so much deep money, there, Rex Development Giddy, because there's a lot of grant money available, and if you add the one point, some of the 1.5 million that we're gonna give to the town, there's a lot of things you can do there. And it was already mentioned earlier, what those businesses would mean. I mean, it's possible, when you talk about leaving a legacy, maybe 20 apartments, maybe 20 condos, people will talk about 20, 30 years from now. Maybe they're talking about a startup company that made a difference in cancer, or diabetes, or the environment. And I don't have to look outside this room, it happened already. There's a company that was formed in a garage by Apple in Madison. It doesn't have to be at Jackson Labs, it doesn't have to be in Boston, it doesn't have to be ELS, it could be right here. And those are the things that we're thinking of. So just to quote Walt Disney, "The greatest asset that we have is our children's minds." And to me, having a place for our kids to go and intern and do things like that, and get a great education, like they have in Madison Public Schools, is a difference maker. So when you digest this, it proves you're right, maybe there's some money, but it could be put towards capital improvements. But on a three-year lease, maybe it's not needed. But $535,000, and maybe you can sell the school in two months, and maybe you can build the condos in one year, and maybe you're gonna get $535,000 per year for three years for 1.0, almost 1.6 million, which would benefit all of us, and yes, I am a taxpayer here in Madison. So that's a brief history, but I want people to know that, what we're trying to accomplish. We're talking about leaving a legacy, and what we're asking you to do tonight is to vote to let the town meeting happen, so that people get all the information, and let them vote to help us help you leave a legacy. Thank you.
You're asking us to give a $480,000 a year. He goes, oh.
There's gonna be a public comment after.
Glad, George, 700 Richborough Road. I wanna comment, and so I'm gonna say, what we're trying to do here is save a school, is people here, where earlier we supported keeping the open fields in town, and I felt a little bit of connection to what's going on with Academy, right? There's a school that was vacated for 14 years, nothing has happened to that. That is terrible, right? No income and a lot of divisive talk around that, right? Now we're looking forward to the next phase, what's going on. There's a school in Island that's closing, and we had an unfortunate situation where our school closed. We're asking this community for help, just temporary help. Can we find a temporary location for three years where we lease the property and the town makes 1.5 million dollars and gives us the time to find another location? So we're asking for other community members' help here, and I think what you're hearing is a similar theme between what we're asking and the folks at Academy early. We wanna preserve the character of our town, right? It's our open space, it's our school, it's our family field, which is why a lot of us came to this town. And so that was where we came to the Board of Selectmen in a bipartisan way. They worked with us to come up with a proposal, and a proposal in which we knew we were not gonna pay market rate lease, because this town is not in the business of just leasing a property, right? So we're actually paying a premium to market rate lease, where while you figure out as a town what you wanna do with that property, you can make 1.5 million dollars, that as John was getting at, to you could apply to developing other things, you know, in the town, whatever the town members think is appropriate. And at the heart of it, it's about turning to your fellow neighbors and asking for help to save a school that's been here for 65 years. And so I understand with, you know, the objection we heard a little bit about, well, you could have sold it for a different price. This doesn't prevent you from selling it. I hope it gets sold for the highest price, for the right use that the town members want, right? What all we're saying is, in the interim, we're giving an option to generate some revenue that's higher than would be generated the next three years, and then after that, it's still owned by the town, and you're helping to save a school that's been here for 65 years. That's all we're looking for the Selectmen and the town members for, and we're asking you for your help to do that.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Engelhardt, 61 Governor's Way. I just wanted to comment and build a little bit on what Vlad and John shared. I was involved with pulling together the financial analysis that went to the town on Friday. Unfortunately, they didn't get a chance to get looked at in depth. We had shared similar financials about a month or so ago, so the same numbers, or very similar numbers. The only major change we made was actually to show the rent coming to the town going up substantially from the original numbers that we put on the table. So we are showing three years of the lease of $535,000. We fully burdened that proposal with the cost of busing and a nurse and maintenance. The capital improvements are not reflected in there, because we still wonder how much of that is really absolutely necessary in a three-year period. The survey was done some time ago, and the school is still an active school, and those improvements have not been made. So we still question and believe that another survey may be warranted on what is absolutely necessary. But what we have done is, we have done a, in effect, a lease first buy, right? So take the scenario, what we've put together is, we've taken the inputs from the town, and they've suggested that they'll be able to sell the land for $3 million. So we have used that assumption. We've also taken assumptions around the ability to convert the property into townhouses. I think as you heard earlier, that the, they've taken Muse and they've assumed a premium to that. My recollection on that is the premium over the Muse is a 25% higher value than what Muse is currently going for. So if I do the math correct, I thought it was somewhere in the $800,000, $900,000 range of not assessed value, but market value of what the price of those units would be. So we've put in a little bit lower assumption on what that would actually sell for. We've done the same thing with, you know, applying a mill rate assumption. We used steady state for four years, 28.04, I believe, which is the current mill rate, and we've then discounted that back. But the important thing for everybody to understand with the financials is, the scenario where the town immediately or as soon as possible converts this property into townhouses, we have made an assumption that the property isn't gonna sell tomorrow, it's gonna be a year or so from now, and then the units are gonna take time to develop, because they will not generate the full tax benefit of an $800,000 or $900,000 property taxed at the current mill rate until they're actually built out, right, and sold, or at least, and built out and appraised. So we've assumed there is a staging of that, it's not gonna happen. They're not, all 20 units are not gonna be built in one year, I believe that was the assumption that was put together from the town. And then what we've done, though, is on the other side, is if we lease the property from the town for OLM Prep, the assumption is, all it does is shift the modeling assumption. So all the assumptions that were made about what would happen to the property if it were converted into townhouses or condos, that same assumption would happen, but just two or three years later. So the lease would take place, and then OLM Prep would vacate the property, and then the town would move ahead with their same plan. So the only difference is, you have a slight loss in the discounted cash flows of that $3 million upfront, but all the other assumptions are identical. So you have a little bit of delay, but in those three years, you're getting $1.6 million of tax revenue to the town. And if you discount that back, fully burdened, when you factor in, as I mentioned, the busing and so forth, it still equates to a $640,000 net present value of revenues to the town. And then we've also further done some assessment on this to assume, what if the mill rate were to increase? So we increased that over the course of three years by 10%. We've also made some assumptions on the interest rate, as the town has done as well. So when you have that money, you're earning 1.5%. So we've tried to stay true to the underlying assumptions that town has used. You're still getting well over $500,000 of net present value, which is cash in the hands of the town to be deployed for any other uses. And that's why we believe this is a win-win for not just, you know, a win-win for OLM Prep and the town of Madison.
And to put the finances in perspective, if you would have done a similar thing with Academy, that you would have generated $7 million in revenue. Instead, the building is vacant, and there's a lot of disagreement about what to do next. And so our proposal allows you to keep a school there, generate revenue, and then let the town figure out what they wanna do with that property. We've submitted everything to the town at, per your request, Tom, and it's not confidential. We hope it's shared with everybody, and it should be, and you asked us to do that, we've done that. So we don't see any reason to hold it back. We also are a little bit frustrated, we've been at this since April, and we were, you know, told that it would go to the town for a vote, and that's what we're requesting, you know, tonight, that you share the documents and this go to the town for a vote.
Thank you. I did want to ask Gene Fitzpatrick to-
That's gonna cost you. So much trouble.
Sorry about that. Chief Fitzgerald, who's the chairman of the Board of Finance, to just-
So as Stacy pointed out-
Will you use this?
Do I need it?
Yes.
Try listening to you guys. So as Stacy pointed out, the Board of Finance was included in the discussions as really Wednesday night. I had asked Stacy to run, to show the Board of Finance, and there's one Board of Finance member here, how the number came up for the lease. We had asked Tom to do a joint meeting with the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen to really look at the impact the role the Board of Finance has in this. There's some discussions about whether or not this does have to go to the Board of Finance, but the Board of Finance did feel that if you're asking our opinion, we don't have enough information to say whether or not we could support this, because we have not been included in the discussions. So that's where we are. If there's further, I know Stacy had explained that she had jury duty, it came in on Friday, so she has not had a chance to talk to our board either. So that's where the Board of Finance is.
Okay, so anybody have anything to add for number 15? Number 16, public comment regarding the documentation from our lady of Mercy Prep Academy. You're on.
The concern that I add on there, there's the newspapers that, that the purchase price, $150,000 for three years, would be taken off the actual purchase price. I look at it as, if I do share responsibility that you all have, in that we, they buy that, there's $480,000 per year, not calculating the present value and so forth, but $480,000 loss that we are subsidizing this school. And I have no problem with schools in town. I've put my kids through four years of Pro Kyo High School, and I'm not even Catholic. I just wanted, for my own personal reasons. But I have a problem in that we are giving up, we are subsidizing that school going forward. And I don't think we should be subsidizing it. If, I mean, there are enough schools around, you got the country school down here, St. Mary's, St. John's, Foot School, Hampton Hall, just to name a few. And your high schools, you got Xavier, Mercy, Sacred Heart Academy, Hopkins, and Rosemary Hall. They can go there.
We're catering eight, sir.
I put my kids to school, I paid for it, and I paid for all the college, too. And I didn't ask anybody for a penny of that. And they're asking us to give up the $400,000,000 per year going forward in tax revenue. That's not right. We have a, have a, if I do share a financial responsibility to all the taxpayers. And our rates keep going up, and what also concerns me is the town of Madison is down almost 1,000 students over the past nine years. That's a 27% decrease. I have to think that since the diocese is closing this thing down, they're contracting and consolidating into Branford. So the same thing has gotta be happening with that school. Maybe not to that magnitude, but it's gotta be happening. And I don't feel that we should be subsidizing this thing at all.
Would you?
Hi, I'm Richard Morris from 43 Governor's Way. I have a different point of view, and that is, I'm not convinced that Island will be sold in December, that the town will necessarily go through a process and decide, quickly decide to sell the school for tax dollars that you suggest. And if we look at the Academy building, it's been sitting vacant for 14 years, there's a lot of strong opinions in this town. So I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of people that wanna express their point of view in terms of how the property should be used, whether it remains as a school or some other usage, but I'm not convinced that the school's gonna be sold in December for $3 million. And what I like is that there's a, there's a group of people here that are willing, able to buy the property, or sorry, to lease the property now and provide money, real money to the town right now. And what you're suggesting has a lot of possibility, but no guarantees. Here we have guarantees.
For three years. And then it comes off the tax rolls if they buy it. All right. Zero tax-
It's not a debate, and it's not on the tax rolls now, so it's not gonna come off the tax rolls. Joe?
So since we haven't seen the financials, I thought some of these questions would get answered, so I'm gonna bring up what I think needs to be in these documents, once again. The costs for the town under this lease, so what are the actual costs that we're gonna be incurring, the insurance cost, the nurse, the transportation. Possible liability for the town under lease. Does the building get included under the strategic planning facility services, or is it moved out depending, you know, how does, how does that all work? Will any purchase price include lost tax revenue, since at that point in time, I'm sure OLM Prep will most likely be becoming nonprofit? So if we're, I don't know that we wanna guarantee a purchase price now for three years out and where things stand. On the OLM Prep side, I've talked to you guys before about some of this stuff. What are the current revenues, and what is the breakdown, tuition versus fundraising? What is the plan for future revenues? How, how is your capital fundraising plan gonna be implemented? What are your startup costs? What's the breakdown between assets and ongoing operating expenses? What's assumed in a percentage increase in the current operating expenses? I'm sure there's some assumptions in there. The enrollment size? What's the base cost that is non-dependent on enrollment size? So what's the, you know, if only five kids come in, what do you have to do to run this school, so to speak? And then at what enrollment level will those base costs increase? Is some things that I would be thinking about. The plans for the building improvement were touched upon tonight, I think that should be kinda solidified. How much insurance is being carried? And since you're currently listed as for-profit, I would anticipate that there's actually more tax liability, because you're gonna be taxed on the assets within the building. So has that been taken into consideration, and what's that projected number? So those are the things that I would like to see answered before this goes to the public, and I'm sure between all of the boards that are here, or, and, you know, private and public, if that can happen, I'm sure the public can then make an educated decision.
And Joe, and we've submitted all that to the Board of Selectmen, so that's, they all vote for public dissemination, what we submitted is no longer confidential.
Okay.
Any other public comments?
Catherine Ferrante, Cops Row. My concern is, four years from now, when this lease is up, if the town determines that it has a better use for this property, is it prepared to tell this wonderful group of students and families, take a hike? They've made their emotional appeal to the board, to the town, help us, we wanna work with you, we wanna stay here. I mean, that's gonna happen three years from now, too, when they want that to be their permanent home. What kind of option to buy is included in this lease? That's the term that I'm most concerned about. And also, this board earlier this year pledged to look at all town properties and considering what to do with Academy School. Perhaps we could leverage rehab and reuse of Academy by selling another town property for development, and Island Ave seems to be the obvious choice to me for that. And to take it out of the equation for four years, considering the timeline that you want on Academy, it just, it would foreclose that option completely. So that's my concern with the length of this lease. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah.
Again, Jim Engelhardt, 61 Governor's Way. I just wanted to comment on the gentleman earlier about, you know, what the potential value of the property is. And again, if I go back to the financials, regardless of what assumption you make, whether you lease or immediately develop, the same set of assumptions would hold true under both scenarios. Again, it's just a timing difference. But I think it's important to note that, you know, this, this real estate market, if you look over the last several years, and you go out, first of all, there's over 250 homes in Madison that are on the market, right, that aren't selling all that fast. And if you look at some of the asking prices of homes, especially the more expensive homes, they're off 30, 40, 50% of what people thought, perceived value. So if we believe that Island Avenue is worth a million in land and 2.5 million in property, I think what I heard, and maybe it's $5 million, at the end of the day, it's gonna be the market that's gonna dictate that. And the value of the building today, if it's not going to be used as a school, that developer is not gonna be willing to pay you significant dollars on an asset that is gonna be either knocked down or completely changed. And just another anecdotal, up in Wallingford, there's a major facility that Bristol Myers School recently sold. It's, I believe it's close to a million square feet, or somewhere in that range. One could argue it's worth 200, 300 million dollars. It sold for $5 million. I mean, a fire sale. Because if someone isn't willing to take that property on in the capacity of what it was built for, it doesn't have the value that you think it does. So I think we just need to be careful when we throw these big numbers out on what these properties are worth. It's only worth what somebody is willing to purchase it for their intended use. And I think Academy's a good, a good example of that, right? I mean, it's been tossed around a number of times, and there's, you know, we know there's some challenges with the building because of environmental, but we have, we all have views of what something could possibly be worth. But we have to be very careful that we're making, we're quoting what we believe something is worth, market's gonna dictate that.
But what we have here also is a preferential treatment for a special interest group. And I don't know what our town chatter says on, do we go back out into the market and have someone else bid on it? I'll leave that up to you folks, because it's preferential treatment.
I just, I wanted to piggyback Catherine Ferrante's comment. We are clearly not looking for a hand, and I think the Board of Selectmen know that, I think Vlad and John had touched upon that as well. We are not expecting some private deal to go through at the end of the three-year lease to purchase. We know that's clearly not gonna-
We know that's clearly not going to happen. You know, we have the best interests of the town at heart. So I, I would hope by a bunch of us, you know, really clarifying that for you guys, that you would take it to heart and know that that's clearly what, you know, we're not looking for a secretive purchase at the end of this lease for a set amount of money.
Any other public comment?
I'm done. Okay, so I'd just like to, to wrap it up, I'd just like to say a couple of things. This lease has to be negotiated. What they've given us is a term sheet, and so there are a lot of different terms of the lease that are not included, that we would need to include. There's been no price that we've agreed to with them, that they could buy it for. This is, that was never part of the conversation. Our, our feeling is that we'll go out for, you know, RFP or RFQ. The rebate that was mentioned in the article, we've done away with that. We, we didn't agree to that. That was something that they requested, but we didn't agree to it. So, you know, all these things could be addressed when we negotiate the lease with them. I think the thing that's, that concerns me most is, and Vlad referred to the fact that it's taken a long time to get to this point. One of the things that concerns me is that we, as a town, have been pushed, and I haven't been comfortable with that, about them setting deadlines, that they need us to hit. Joe brought up the point that people have a lot of questions, and I think those questions all need to be answered before we take this to a public, to a town meeting. So I, I, you know, that's my concern. My biggest concern is that the people of the town are going to be asked to vote on something they don't know what they're voting on.
Tom, I'd like to move that we open the agenda for the purpose of canceling the August 6th town meeting and discontinuing discussions with Our Lady of Mercy Prep Torrey Academy. I would, I'd like to talk more about that if the motion is successful.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, routine, discussion.
We've wrestled with this from the beginning, is, is, I think, the phrase that Alan and I coined when we were meeting with the group early on in weekly was, we were guided by an optimistic hope to get to yes. And we've looked for the reasons why this could succeed and, and how it might ultimately not succeed. I think we've gotten a little wrapped around the axle with the financial discussions.
Can you turn this down a little bit?
I have, no, I don't. I'm just going to shout.
Okay.
We've gotten wrapped around the axle of the financial discussions. The, the guiding principle for us here, the five of us, is not the finances. And, you know, and I worked with Stacy as she was coming up with those numbers, and they were intended to be a push. They were intended to be revenue neutral to us putting the, the property on the market and selling it. And I think that it is fairly revenue neutral. If we assume a private school in town, the busing, the nursing, all of that is, is, is just a push. There's, there's no up or down for the town on it. But as I consider the risks that we've struggled to enumerate, right? We, we have this notion that there is risk to the town, that we can't fully insulate ourselves from by becoming a landlord, which quite frankly, we've never done before, and putting a value on that, looking at the bigger value to the town and to the taxpayers, and not just to a school. And also taking into consideration that we're embarking on a meaningful 10-year strategic plan to wrap our property up for three years, take it off of the table for discussion, just doesn't feel like the right thing to do at this time. I'm not saying I could never, ever agree to becoming a landlord at some point in the future, but I think right now, the timing is just wrong, that there's too many other things going on, there are too many unanswered questions for us. Like quite frankly, I don't know that the answers exist. But I, I feel that we are now in danger of just stringing these folks along, that we've, we've asked, we've re-asked, sometime we've, sometimes we've moved the bar, and, and we've heard from them. You know, you're, you're moving the goalpost on us. And I, I think that just speaks to, you know, certainty that we've got individually and as a group. And if, if we're not confident in this, and certainly I'm not, I, I think that the prudent thing for us to do is to step back from this discussion, figure out what is the right course for that property, and, and then, and then move forward, whatever that might be. And whether that's part of academy school, or whether it's selling it for condos, or selling it to one person to put up a 17,000 square foot house, I don't know what that is. But I, I think we're doing a disservice to these folks right now.
I'll chime in next. I agree with Bruce, there, there are unanswered questions, but the question I'm going to pose at this moment is, whose decision is this to make? I, I am not anxious for this town to become a landlord. I don't think we have a lot of experience in it, and we may not do it very well. On the other hand, I think there is enough good in this proposal, that it represents an interim measure which brings some substantial revenue to the town while we develop our strategic plan, while we identify a vision for this property, while we try, while we try to build consensus from the public about what to do with this property, and then the time to take to get it approved by the public, and then begin to implement. I think inevitably, that time period is measured in years, it's not measured in weeks or months. And so I find it very difficult to walk away from one, one and a half million dollars over a three-year period while we go through the normal process that we're going to need to go through to, to build consensus for what to do with Island Avenue, just like we're going through a process to figure out what to do with academy. There's a certain analogy between these two properties, and while sometimes the private sector is, is absolutely the best answer, we, we sell it off to a developer and they do something with it, I'm not sure in this case that the public, when the time comes to vote, isn't going to say, well, wait a minute, what are the other things we might do with this property? And I think we, as elected leaders, have to recognize that this is a process that's probably going to take more than months. I think it's going to take years. I think the same issues are going to arise with Island Avenue that have arisen with academy. And I think these have been painful lessons for all five of us, but I, I'm trying to figure out what we can take away from this lesson. So I agree with my colleague Bruce, I, I don't think we're ready on August the 6th to put anything to a vote, but I think we should continue to quickly figure out what is the documentation that the public is going to need in order for us to feel comfortable calling for a vote. And if some of the officials here at the table and, and our staff aren't yet comfortable with the documents, I think that's what we need to address next, and, and for the time being, continue to, to move this towards a public vote of some kind. So Bruce, I share a lot of your reservations, maybe I'm just more of an optimist.
I admire that. I, I think, I, I, you know, we disagree on the academy-island analogy. I think academy is, is one of the bookends of downtown. It's in the historic district. There is a, a community attachment to the old Hand Academy that I just don't believe exists for Island. And, and so I, 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 I am more optimistic that the property would move quicker. I, I'd like to observe that there's giant leaps of faith on both of these decisions, right? A leap of faith that we can, as a community, come to agreement on what, on how to dispose of that property is a leap of faith, right? That we could do it in the next 12, 15 months or so is a leap of faith, right? But it's just as big a leap of faith to think that the fundraising efforts for OLM Prep will continue at their current rate, that their enrollment will go from 90 to 165 in a year. I, and so I think that there are big, big leaps of faith everywhere we look. And I, I'm just, I'm not ready to leap. I guess I'm conflicted, I have to admit. I feel a lot of the same emotions that I think we're all wrestling with since April, when we started these conversations. I guess I, I tend to agree with you that, you know, we may not be ready for, you know, a referendum or a, or a town meeting on the 6th yet. I also do, I feel very strongly that, you know, to sever negotiations is not fair to these folks at this point. You know, Al, you may, you said something about, you know, there was enough good in this proposal that's there, and, and, you know, I, I think about why I came to Madison, and, you know, the heart and the passion of this community, and, and I came for the schools, I came for the churches, I came for the people that, you know, we sit here with today. And I think, I think that's an important piece of this conversation that, you know, tends to get left out. Now, does that equal a good business decision? Absolutely not. You know, but we also owe it to ourselves, and owe it to our friends at OLM Prep, to ask the right questions and evaluate the right analysis to make a smart business decision. I think, you know, if we're basing postponing negotiations based on gut feel, as opposed to cold hard facts, when poor Stacy got the, the information on Friday evening and has been in jury duty and hasn't had a chance to look at it, you know, I, I would, I would want to hear from our finance director on what they think of the deal. I would want to hear from our first selectman on how he evaluates this deal. I would want to ask all five of the selectmen that sit here, how you feel this deal is or is not good for the town, but I think to dismiss it altogether, I think is a little short-sighted. Are there risks? Yes. You painted the malocley. I think there are risks. Could they be mitigated? Probably yes. You know, and that's through, you know, well-thought-out deal negotiation and documentation, you know, whatever we put together in a, in a lease agreement. So I, I guess I'm conflicted. You know, I come back to some of the base conversation that we had at the beginning, which is, years one through three, do we really think we're going to get a sale and tax revenue? And I struggle with that based on what I've seen at academy. You know, I just don't see it happening immediately, and, and I think this is, this is an opportunity for immediate benefit, short-term. And it benefits our friends at OLM Prep as well, so. Are we ready to make a decision on the 6th? Probably not. Is the town ready to make a decision on, on the 6th? Probably not, but I think we, we owe it to continue the conversations. It's too much money not to, why wouldn't we consider, consider their offer?
So clearly, when, you know, when I was looking, I mean, we're not looking at it individually, we're not looking at it just as the board, we're trying to determine what's right for the town. Would I love to see the school there? Yes, I think, I think that would be a wonderful thing personally. I mean, I know the, the history, I think it would be great. So I have to break it down, you know, just put all that aside, and just break it down and say, what is the best thing for the town? And again, I'm going to put this in a financial perspective. So, you know, I think, looking obviously, all of the, yes, they, there's been money raised, which is, which is, you know, to their credit, but I still, we still are looking at projections which are, you know, highly dependent on some pretty aggressive, in my opinion, I mean, you know, enrollment figures, and if those enroll, they do not make, you know, that enrollment, then those financials are going to, you know, they're not going to be able to meet them. Can they raise more money in fundraising? They say they can. I, you know, I, I don't know. That would be left, you know, that's obviously left to be seen. The other concern, and the biggest concern as far as the financials, forget the operating side, I still have a lot of questions, and, and we've discussed it, been in a couple of the meetings, we've talked about the capital expenditures, and, and maybe it's not 1.4 million dollars that's needed right away, but it's, it's, it's going to be pretty significant based on the studies that have been done. Not that there can't be more, but, you know, just over three years, I'm going to guess that maybe close to 50% of it has got to be, they've got to come out with a, with an, you know, outline of that. The town has been pretty clear in saying that we're not going to put any more capital into this. So where does that money come from? Can it come from fundraising? I don't, I don't know. And what if the enrollment isn't there? So that's, that's the risk analysis that I did. And then the only other thing, well, a couple of other things, you know, I have to refer back to Salt Metal Park. What happened there was, it went through a process, three years, five, I don't remember how many years, it was just a lot of years, to get the, all of the approvals. During that period, the market was great. By the time all the approvals were in place, the market had tanked. So you wait three years, now you've got to, who knows where the, where the real estate market's going to be? We know it's cyclical. We know the state of Connecticut isn't doing anything to help it. So, and then finally, I just have to say that I, comparing it to academy, academy has a lot more emotion, I agree with this. This is a great location with a, with an old school, and I went to school there, so I mean, that's how old it is. But I, I don't think that there would be the, I don't think, it's not fair to really compare academy, this is in my opinion, academy to, to Island. I, I think Island, you could sell easily. And just to back that up, many of the people at the academy public hearings were saying, throw, throw Island in. Nobody, I don't want to say nobody really cares about Island, but I mean, really, it's, it's, there's no historic value, it's a great location. So, you know, I, I am conflicted, too, but I don't think, number one, I don't think that we're ready to, to send this to the public. So that's where I'm at.
Okay, so I think we all agree that a town meeting on August 6th is not a good idea. I think maybe the thing I'd like to see you change in your motion is discontinuing negotiations. Just because if they can hang in there, and we can come up with something, but, you know, the board of finance needs to look at this, our finance director needs to look at it, we need to look at it, and we need to get this information out to people in council that everybody's voting on. So I would urge you to make a motion that doesn't include discontinuing discussion.
So I will withdraw my motion to open the agenda for the purposes of canceling the August 6th town meeting and discontinuing discussions, and I will remotion that we open the agenda to cancel the August 6th town meeting. So I need a second.
Second. Al, second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we cancel the August 6th town meeting. That was just opening the agenda.
Oh, yeah. We just, sorry.
Warren's with me.
Okay. Not so long. Okay, you make a motion, cancel the August 6th meeting. You second that, Al?
Yes, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 17, update from the Director of Planning and Economic Development regarding the housing profile of the town, including the Florida.
The one that's now down, we want to put it further back. I'll be free. So, I'll be. So, I apologize for the timing of this. It's actually, I'm presenting you the housing data profile that the Partnership for Strong Communities puts together. And I'm doing this in some ways related to our participation in the Sustainable Connecticut Program. One of the action items asks that we do present this information to you and review it with you at a public meeting, and your next meeting is after the action items are due to the program, so apologize for that. So, I thought I'd just very briefly kind of run through the highlights of it, if you guys have any questions, we can do that, but I'll also offer to you that maybe we could place this on a wider meeting as a follow-up item, then we can kind of dig into it a little deeper. And so, again, this is housing data profile put together by the Partnership for Strong Communities, and it's available on their website, so if anybody wanted to look it up, it's easily accessible. And I'll just go through the kind of headings and pull out some key information. So, regarding population, age, and race, it indicates that we have an increase in residents living alone, a decrease in households with someone under 18, an increase in households with someone over 65, and a relative lack of diversity compared to the state as a whole. So, I don't think any of that is really surprising. Our household income, as of 2015, median household income was $107,183. There's a section entitled Aging of the Population, and there is a projected decrease in school-aged population. The document actually projects a 22% decrease. I went back and looked through the Board of Ed documents. They did a updated enrollment projection back in February 2017, and they concluded a 15% decline through 2028, which is a little bit more in line with statewide figures. So, I think I would, I would say that we should be looking at that 15% number as a more accurate number. There's a chart that talks about population projections for different age cohorts, and I'm not sure that I actually agree with some of these projections, and I did have some preliminary conversation ship with the Partnership for Strong Community about it. If you look at the figures from 2015 to 2030 for the age cohorts, 25 to 29 and 30 to 34, there's a pretty big projected uptick. And kind of, we all know anecdotally, that's really the time that maybe the kids graduate high school, go away to college, and they're working somewhere else. And they're maybe coming to Madison or coming back to Madison when they're ready to start a family. And so, you know, I need to dig a little deeper with the partnership to try to figure out where are those numbers really coming from, and is that the case in Madison? I think it's probably not. And then at the same time, we have, they project a pretty significant decrease in 40 to 44, 45 to 49 population, which is, again, when we're seeing people come back and buy houses here and continue families. So, I think we need to dive into that a little, a little deeper. Yeah, so, you know, one of the questions that comes to mind when you look at these projections and when you think, you know, what Madison experiences is, do we have the type of housing that we're going to need in the future? Obviously, we have a whole lot of baby boomers that maybe be looking to downsize, and there's not a lot of opportunity for that in Madison. And we're also hopefully looking to attract younger people and younger families that are just starting out to move here and maybe, again, that we don't have the exact style of housing that we might need to attract those folks. So, there's just a section on characteristics of housing stock. We have a very high percentage of single-family homes, no surprise, 93%, and we have a very small number of housing units constructed since 2010, so we don't have a lot of new housing coming on the market to appeal to those different age cohorts. And then for the number of bedrooms, there's a very small percentage of homes are two bedrooms or smaller. One of the highlights of the document is talking about affordability, and again, I think this is a little bit misleading. The chart indicates that 28% of owners spend more than 30% of their income on housing, and that's a measure of affordability. But if that household happens to be high-income earners, 30% of the high-income still leaves a lot of money for other, other types of expenditures. So, again, I'm planning on working with the partnership to dig a little bit deeper, really which income brackets are really stressed with that 30% housing number. I think we need to dive a little bit deeper in that. There is definitely, you know, segments of our population that are burdened by their housing costs. I think it's just not quite 28%, so we need to dig a little deeper in there. Home values have increased 76% since the year 2000. Our gross rent is somewhat higher percentage of rents above $500 a month than New Haven County and the state. Regarding housing costs and income, the median income for rentier households and the median gross rent suggests that 58% of income is being spent on housing. So, to me, this suggests that, you know, rental units is likely a need in Madison from an affordability perspective. And the Planning and Zoning Commission came to that same conclusion during some of our analysis, so we've made some regulation changes to try to encourage the creation of rental units. There was a project that was approved on Brookside Road for nine rental units. Bob Dowler got a project approved on Todd's Road, that was 34 units, which actually also contained four deed-restricted units where the rent would be below market rate. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission is actively trying to, try to do some things to address this issue. Again, regarding the number of affordable housing units, you look at the Affordable Housing Appeals List, and that's based on Section 8-30G of the Connecticut General Statutes. And very briefly, that regulation says that if a town doesn't have 10% affordable housing and the developer were to come in and propose an affordable housing project in town, it kind of trumps your zoning regulations. You'd have to, there'd have to be a real significant safety issue or public health issue for a Planning and Zoning Commission to be able to deny a project. So, to meet the threshold of that 10%, we need to add 675 new units of affordable deed-restricted housing, which is extremely unlikely. So, the commission is looking at opportunities to try to figure out how to address this issue, and I don't think, most communities don't have 10% affordable housing. I don't think we're going to get there, but I think we can make a meaningful impact potentially by looking at accessory dwelling units. Right now, we do allow either in-law apartments in a, in a structure, in a detached garage that I think maybe would be a vehicle to address some of this issue. So, again, I'm just, due to the hour, I'm just going to give you that quick overview.
So, you got all the same points?
Yes, we get the same point. But I would like to, I would like to come back though and talk to you a little bit more detail about this, because I'm kind of curious, I get perspectives from the Planning and Zoning Commission members, and maybe a little bit of a broader perspective from you guys would be helpful. So, the challenge for us is how do we accommodate the demand for the different types of housing that we're going to need in the future while maintaining the character of the community? So, I think that's something, maybe I'll just leave you with that for tonight, and I'll come back.
Sort of a theme wrapped into many.
Yeah, a little bit, unintentional.
Thank you.
Fillmore, you're up.
Number 18, discuss and take actions approved abating certain taxes for the Madison Land Trust and Land Management Board in 2020.
You're moved.
Second.
I'm going to, I'm going to be recusing myself from this discussion, as I'm a member of the Land Trust Board.
Oh, I sense a hung jury.
I'll be very brief. This has to do with a one-acre parcel that we were given, title transferred on January the 2nd. It's, abuts our Finch Creek property, which is the oldest land trust-owned property in town. And it, we accepted the property because it, A, it abuts it, and B, it could provide, in the future, good kayak or canoe access to the creek. That Finch Creek area does not have a lot of good access if somebody wants to get out there and paddle up and down. So, there are a number of advantages. So, anyway, we accepted it, and in the paperwork manipulations between Tax Assessor's Office and the Tax Collector's Office, somewhere along the line, they forgot that we were a tax-exempt organization. And I believe in your package, you have a copy of the bill that we got.
Have you done the application?
We're making application. Now, we were told when we put this on the, on the agenda, I was told by Orietta and who else was in there with me?
Me.
And you, that there was no form, and we said, okay, for the once every 10 years that this comes up, you know, we're not going to burden the town with making a form, so.
So, we are the application?
But the Land Trust has, if you haven't yet, you will be completing the state's application that Orietta needs in order to process the tax exemption to the state. I've spoken to both Orietta and to the tax collector about whether, when someone completes that application, we can use that for you guys to use as your approval basis, instead of creating a second form with the same exact information for the same organization to fill out, we'll just go by the state's form that Orietta has to collect in order for it to come to you guys for approval anyways.
So, we don't have a cart and horse problem here, but the statute says that the organization will fill in, file, fill in and file the application with the Board of Selectmen for abatement. We're doing the abatement in advance of the application, which is, I'm totally cool with, I just didn't know if that was a problem.
Orietta doesn't feel that it will be a problem, and in the future, it won't be done this way. She'll give us the form that the organization has completed, the state's form that the organization has been completed. That's how we're going to handle the ordinance language going forward.
Yeah, I didn't want to, not to cut too far, I pointed, I was looking at the ordinance. Paragraph B just says to file an application, it doesn't say anything about a form, so we are applying.
Application received. And is this the same process you've gone through with other properties?
No, we never had to do this before, because normally, we're only, we're registered as a nonprofit, and so the bill never comes. It's only because this transfer, this transfer happened and it, you know, didn't, something fell through the cracks.
Oh, so it gets checked.
Yeah.
The last time this was done was 2001, I think I found, going back through past files, so this is not something that the board has to consider very often.
What did you want to say?
Okay. I've lived here about eight years. This is about my second time that I've come to a meeting like this here in Madison.
You picked the wrong one.
Well, I guess so. Except I was interested, you know, I read the paper and I am involved in my own mind. I was sitting next to this gentleman, and he said to me, so how do you feel about the, about the two subjects that are going to be coming up? And I said, well, I'm having a little bit of difficulty right now, and so, you know, I'm in favor of trying to get as much money from Academy School and also from Island School. And he said, this is what his comment, I don't know who was, he said that, and I hope it's not being recorded or anything.
It is.
It is?
You're on the camera.
I don't want it.
We can't turn it off.
Well, anyway, he said that, he said, well, you can move out of here, and...
I'm sorry you had to hear that, that's not, that's...
That's what he said. And then he said, I said, I don't think that, you know, enough money is coming in that we need more businesses or something like that to supplement us. And he said, well, all we have to do is just pay more taxes. That's what he said to me. And I came back to him afterwards, and I said, that was disgusting.
Good for you. For sticking up for you.
I just thought I'd say that.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
It was interesting.
Sorry it was so long. It's not over.
We still have 10 more to go.
Have a good night. So, we have a motion in the cell, right?
Aye.
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 Oh, and you were repeating.
I'm staying in at this, yeah.
Okay, number 21, discuss and take action to authorize first selection advantage to apply for and accept on behalf of the town and grant from the neglected cemetery account when a first selection advantage is authorized, enter, turn, and execute any of the orders.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
What is favor?
Aye.
How much money is in this for us?
$2,000.
$2,000.
Okay, aye.
There was a little more to that, but don't worry about it. Number 22, discuss and take action to approve line item transfers totaling $6,055.36.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and take action to approve the appointed Chris Puccelli as the project manager for the Strategic Planning Facilitation Services Project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I would love to table this one till Al and I have an opportunity to chat with the guy. I guess I'm, from a process standpoint, I'm struggling with this one a little bit, because I feel like this should be the role of a town employee, AKA the guy in the corner over there, Mr. Town Planner. So, I guess I'd like to have more of a conversation amongst the selectmen before we make a decision about somebody that I don't know in the first place. It feels like it should be managed by a town employee as opposed to just another, another person. And if we are going to consider another person, maybe we need to be considering a committee or something that's more bipartisan to play this out, so.
Why, is this a partisan issue?
I don't know. I'm not making any one, but I don't know the individual, so I'm only basing it on the recommendation you guys.
Do you know the individual every time we appoint somebody to another committee or commission?
What's that?
Do you always know the individuals?
I try to, yeah, I was the nominations guy, so I, yeah.
I don't just mean the Democrats, I mean everybody.
Yeah, this isn't a personal attack, Tom, I'm just, I'm asking if we can table it, because I don't know the individual, so.
So, I haven't been completely up to speed on the process. So, the recommendation is coming from the planning company, right? Company that's consulting?
So, the recommendation from the planning company was that it not be a member of the board of selectmen. That was the recommendation.
They didn't say it could be you, right?
They did not say it couldn't be a staff person, but they said it not be a member of the board of selectmen, right?
That makes sense.
Yeah, I think that was my recollection of the call.
I would argue that the keeper of our plan of conservation and development doesn't come into the process unbiased, and I'm not attributing a bad bias to it, but...
I don't disagree, I think, so, I guess the benefits to me managing it is I do have a pretty good picture of all the players and who would give input, but the negative of me being involved is I do come with some slight biases just based on my experiences here and my opinions about what could happen in the future. So, I mean, maybe kind of middle ground could be a small, two or three-person project management team that I could be a part of to kind of help facilitate the process. Maybe that's a second option.
If you were willing to do it, I'd be comfortable with it.
I'm not advocating either way, I'm just giving you guys alternatives to talk about.
Would you be comfortable with it? I wouldn't be comfortable with Dave. And if, for the very simple reason that I would want his voice to be on the planning side of the conversation, not the facilitating side of the conversation, because of all of those perspectives that you bring, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like to participate in the process, if I feel like I'm constrained in any way by being a project manager, I think that is a bit of a, maybe not the right place for me.
I feel the town planner can easily play both roles here. I am not concerned, the fact that Dave is a professional planner, has ideas about what to be in the plan, but the facilitating of the process, which is what I understand this job is, Dave's already exhibited wonderful skills when it comes to organizing and nudging and keeping a process going, and so I would be very comfortable seeing Dave in both roles.
Well, it was suggested to us that we have a project manager, and Chris has project management experience in strategic planning. So, I got you guys his resume last week, and that's why I put him up.
So, my question was, if we were to consider deferring this decision, what, how does it impact the project of strategic planning? This was a fairly aggressive timeline to do this, right? this, right?
Yeah, they originally proposed 10 weeks, and we agreed with them when they, when we signed the paperwork and stuff, that no later than the end of September would we finish this.
Is there a penalty for starting later? I think this is much ado about nothing. I think labeling it as partisan is misplaced and misguided.
I didn't label it as partisan. That wasn't the words I used at all. I didn't label it as partisan. I don't think that's fair. So I hadn't met with the guy. I don't know him. I haven't had an opportunity to talk with him yet. And I feel that it's the process which I feel like should be the top letter.
I also don't think I could support a committee of a project manager.
Yeah, I agree with you. I don't think a committee stands there either. I agree with that.
Maybe a job description is in order to decide what this, you know, I have a vision of what I would utilize a project manager for in this, in this strategic process. That may not be the same as, as what anybody else would think. So maybe that's the starting point, is we figure out what the responsibility of this position is.
You guys want to try and coordinate a call with the consultant? That'd be a quick two people?
Yeah, probably.
Create a phone call.
Yeah, have them help us with the project, with the job description.
So they probably have. It's probably something they could send to them pretty quick.
In the meantime, you guys can talk to Chris.
Is this something that can wait until the next regular meeting?
No, we can call a special meeting to do this. All right. Kind of table it. Number 24, discuss and take action to approve the resignation of Susan Stark from the Power of Park Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second. With our gratitude, because, I mean, as every volunteer in this town recognizes, it's, it's a lot of work.
Indeed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss and take action to approve the resignation of Susan Banjero from the Youth and Family Services Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It says tax abatement refunds, though. Did you have any?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it $855.75? Do I have it right?
Right here. Yeah, $855.75, yep.
I didn't get it.
It's the last thing in the...
I didn't give you the summary.
So I'll move. I'll move. We accept the $855.75.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Susan's comments?
I actually just want to reiterate the fact that I do have a strong faith that David can be both a project manager and as a town planner, give input. I think it's incumbent on the town to have a project manager that, that has ownership of that and has a, basically a responsibility out in their job description. And is this going to be a secondary cost? Or is this person doing it out of the goodness of their heart? Who's going to manage the project manager? I think that these are all things. If you just have a lone project manager that's off on his own, where's the input from on how the project should go then? And I manage project managers, so I know how they can go off into Never Never Land and get tied up in details. And having somebody who works for the town that is direct responsibility to the first selectman, there is somebody who will keep tabs and ensure that the process fits through. So those are my comments. Accountability.
Number 28, ladies and I report selectmen comments.
Please note.
Okay, you want to do it, Jerry?
So moved.
Second.